Close to 7:00 PM and we will open this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizens caring to share any comments with us?
We do have three attendees tonight and I do see one raised hand already. I will go ahead and promote that person to a panelist so they will have three minutes for their comments. And if you can state your name, email address and address for the record before your comments, that would be great.
Stacy Valenzuela, Lakewood Villa in Kenmore. And what I wanted to say is as we celebrate affordable housing last week with proclamations throughout King County, it is important to put forward the actions to reduce homelessness and our residents cost burden. With temporary relief from the extended COVID-19 moratorium extended to December 31st, many of our residents currently out of work or on cut hours and are one step from homelessness. How many of our residents will be evicted when the memorial tally expires? Some of the things that I put through in numbers was that in King County, actually, they put together on the task force, they will need about 244,000 low and very low housing units in the next five years, while some bonus market rate units sent empty for months. Others are filled temporary, but the tenants are one bill, one energy, one injury and one paycheck from being evicted. Now here's a look at the numbers. King County average median income is 100,000 to 126,000 monthly. The moderate low income is 70 to 80,000. This is a level at most developers, Arch and our city have been building units and giving a tax exemption. The low income is 50 to 60,000 and the very low is under 30,000 and that's at the 30%. Most seniors and disabled received a fixed income under 23,900 to 1500 monthly. Who do we need to help first? Not those in the 70 to 80% that can afford market rate. We keep hearing that no one should be spending over 30% of a person's income on housing, but cities continue to allow and support the density and rental in those rates for bonus and market rates. The numbers don't support the housing. Many seniors and disabled social security make for social security is 13,500 a year. Their rent at the mobile home parks at the high level is about 11,000. The low market rental rents are 19,000 to 28,000 a year. There's, that's double of what they even take in. We need you to support St. Vincent's, Imagine Housing, Habitat for Humanity, Compass Housing, and our local churches that care to support and build real affordable housing in our community. We need you to require more developers to help meet these needs and build at least 25 to 30% of their units at the low and very low affordable housing rates or 30% to qualify for permits, incentives and tax exemptions. And even today I thought of it possibly we can go outside the box and give only six years tax exemption to those that are 60 to 70% of affordable housing and give 12 years exemption, tax exemption, only the those that will make the 30% and lower affordable housing units.
Ms. Valenzuela, your three minutes are up. I will allow.
Can I say just one thing? I hope that you guys will join the HDC tomorrow. There's a Zoom meeting on Affordable Housing 101 in King County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. More others who care to share some comments?
We do have other attendees. If you would like to comment, you can use the raise hand feature via Zoom and I will then promote you to a panelist where you will be able to comment. So I will give you a moment to see if anyone else raises their hands. I do not see any other raised hands at this time.
Okay.
I actually, just one more hand popped up. So just one moment. If you can state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Burnham and I'm in Kenmore. Is, I think that's what you're asking for, not the address, address, right?
That works, yes.
Yeah, so I'm, I've been involved with the City Hall and planning in as far as I've been overseeing these meetings for the last couple of weeks or so and I'm new to the, this housing, affordable housing. But I'm, I, what I want to impart is that I'm really concerned about the lack of the tree canopy and so developers are grandfathered in with a 10-year-old policy from 10 years ago. And what I would like to put my board in, sorry I'm being so convoluted, is to have developers maybe pay attention to the, the existing old growth habitat that's there and if this does go through to allow some of this old growth to maintain, to, to maintain the value, the canopy, the shade, the character of Kenmore. That's all. And I know it can be done with both, both goals can be met. That's all.
Thank you for sharing that, Emily. So our next, more, so that's it for known folks who care to comment, right?
Correct. I do not see any other raised hands.
Okay, so our next agenda item is the Affordable Housing Review Process. So I'll invite our city staff to, to join us at this point. Hi Lori. Floor is yours. Thank you for.
Yeah. So shall I go ahead or?
Go, go right ahead Lori. It's, it's all yours.
Okay. Well, this week we're continuing the discussion of the expedited review process for affordable housing developments. And so there are actually four goals that I've listed for this evening. One is to take a look at the proposed code amendments. Those are in attachments. I think it's one, one and two and three. The first two attachments are language, contain language that you've already seen with a few minor adjustments. Attachment three contains language that would have to be amended in some other code sections if you wanted to move ahead with these changes. The second goal for tonight is to decide on the question of additional standards for being able to follow through with the expedited process. And as I said in the memo, I have talked, I had contacted three affordable housing developers and I'll report back on two, two of those conversations. The third thing we need to discuss this evening are the, is the Development Agreement Chapter and possible amendments addressing housing on property owned or controlled by a religious organization. You saw in the memo that I had talked with the city attorney and have answers to a couple of questions you raised. And then I also included as an attachment, the Bill Digest for the state legislation that we're responding to along with some proposed amendments to the Development Agreement Chapter. And then the last thing, when we finished all of these conversations, we can decide whether you feel like you're far enough along in the discussion for us to schedule a public hearing. And if so, we would schedule that for November 17th, your second meeting in November. So backing up to the amendments in attachments one, two and three. Did you have any questions about those or do you want me to go over those in more detail? They are again in your packet. The first two sets you've previously seen. The third set is some minor changes to a couple of chapters that reference this new potential process.
Anybody have any questions or should we just let Lori go ahead and do a summary for us? Is that what you're thinking of Lori, doing a summary for us?
Well, I'm happy to walk through the amendments if, if you want to do that. There's again, no real changes from the last time you talked about it, but I, it's always helpful to refresh. So if you would like me to do that, I'm happy to. In attachment one, on the last page, that is where you find this new section in the chapter on affordable housing that talks about the expedited review process. And as you recall, subsection A talks about the opportunity for someone who would typically require a type two land use decision to move to a type one land use decision. If they were an affordable housing project and didn't include some of these other things. And one of those things you asked me to follow up on was a variance. You asked me to talk with the Development Services Director and say, and ask if we left that the variance in there so that if you were going to require a variance, you couldn't go through that process. Would that essentially kick out a number of affordable housing projects? And you saw his comment, which was basically no, that a variance is pretty rare. And he didn't think it would, that leaving that in there would be much of an impact. And then subsection B is where we talk about the possibility of an affordable housing developer requesting an expedited review from the city. If the city, if the city had staffing capability, they might take on that process. If the city did not, the opportunity would be there for an applicant to request that a consultant working for the city move along the processing of their permit. Okay, attachment. Let's see here. Attachment two is chapter 19. That's the chapter in the zoning code that talks about land use processes. And on the second page of attachment two in the yellow, underline, strike through is where we acknowledge that affordable housing projects that meet the standards in the section we just talked about get to be a type one land use decision instead of a type two land use decision. And then attachment three, this is the site plan review chapter and you have to go to the third page of that attachment. Really all we're doing here is, you know, it says here, this is going to be processed through a type two permit, but we have to say no unless you're going through the process described in the Affordable Housing Chapter. So we make that change and then in the next chapter, 1880, that's another chapter where the process is referenced. And so there are amendments to that chapter to acknowledge that it might actually be going through a type one process rather than a type two. So I think this is probably the right point unless you have questions for me to tell you what I heard from the developers.
Lori, I just had one, one question at the end, well, maybe not the end of attachment three. Maybe it's, let's see, where is it? It's at, well, it's page 17 in the, it's under, hang on a second. I lost my. Oh yeah, it's, it's under the purpose of the residential density incentives.
Yeah.
Peas. Yeah, it's the very last phrase, I guess, in B C is, give the public opportunity to review and comment is strict.
Right.
Consistency with what we're considering then.
Right, correct. So the reason that I took that out is because the type one process, as we've discussed, doesn't give an opportunity for public comment unless there's super review involved. So it felt a little inappropriate to leave in under purpose, a statement that said, we're going to give the public an opportunity to comment when in fact, they might not have an opportunity.
Right, okay.
So I don't think it changes the intent of that purpose section, but I did think it was probably cleaner to take that out.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought was some, for consistency's sake. So, okay, thank you.
I have a question Lori. Thank you for working on the code amendments that were pretty clear. I understood them. Looking through the memo though, it, and I, it really raises some fundamental questions for me. And this may be helped when we, when you talk about what the developer's response was. But I think Arch's statement that there's really little real savings as a result of the expedited process was a pretty powerful statement. What value are we really intending to derive out of this expedited process? I see new regulation, but I've lost the purpose.
So, well, I think that if I talk with you about what the affordable housing developers have said, that that will answer that question. So I contacted three, I contract, contacted two nonprofit housing developers and then a third for-profit housing developer and I didn't hear from the third person. That was a project that was recently proposed in Kenmore and, and although it's gone through quite a bit of the permit process, they may actually already have their permits, but they changed architects. I had a hard time. I reached out to three different people and didn't hear back. So I don't think there was a deliberate intent not to contact me, but I didn't hear from them. So what I'm going to report on are the two contacts I had with the specifically affordable housing developers nonprofit. One of those was Imagine Housing and the other one was Dash. And those two organizations, the names were given to me by Arch as potential Kenmore developers. Imagine Housing certainly is, is considering some projects. So I asked them specifically whether the expedited review process helps make a project more feasible. And Imagine Housing said that in their experience, the more critical path was the funding process through King County and the Washington State Department of Commerce and that they generally assumed 12 months for permit review. And that if it was saving any, if it still could be accomplished within 12 months without a change process, they weren't sure it would make a big impact. So that's one perspective. Then I talked with Dash, Chris Buchanan, the Director of Real Estate Development there and she said, yes, anytime savings is helpful and the lower level process as described would be good. Here's a quote, "The measures if enacted would definitely reduce uncertainty, compact the schedule, reduce costs and incentivize, incentivize the production of more affordable housing." So she felt strongly that it would make a difference. So I think we've heard a variety of perspectives. I don't think there's anything, any harm in the approach. It was a strategy from the Housing Strategy Plan. And so my conclusion was, yes, there is value. I then asked the second question, if the permit process was reduced, but only in exchange for either a lower level of affordability or more affordable units, would that make a difference? And this is really what Arch was, I think, focusing on, which was that the long-term cost of having to provide more low-income units or a deeper level of affordability is not mitigated by the faster time period. So they may, you may get a faster time period, but, and you get maybe a little bit of money at the very beginning, but then you're, you're committed for years to providing this unit, which may be more expensive to operate because the, you know, the person living in it is not paying full market rent. So they did not think that that would be valuable. And Dash, Ellen with Imagine didn't really address this question, but Dash said definitely yes, that they agreed with Arch that you shouldn't have to work harder to provide something more. The short-term benefit does not outweigh the long-term cost of this approach. And that the incentive itself is the provision of the low income or very low income affordable housing. And why do you need something else on top of that? So that's what I heard from them. My conclusion was that the approach that you're considering is worthwhile, but that adding on yet another level of requirement is probably not worthwhile.
I have to say, I'm convinced by everything we've heard that there is no significant economic advantage to an expedited process. So one conclusion out of that would be then there is no quid value here or basis for a quid pro quo. But the next piece of that is if there's no economic value here to the developer or incentive, why are we, what is the value? What are we after? What's the gain we're going to get out of expedited process? And what really is the process improvement that we put out there? The only thing I haven't been able to identify is that we're eliminating community and neighborhood input. And by suppressing that, we're somehow going to get quicker turnaround, which I could see may be of value to developers, although from what you described, none of them raised that as an issue. So again, I'm not sure if eliminating the community's ability to provide input to a significant change in their neighborhood is justified. I just don't see the value there. And I'd really like to hear other people's opinion on that, but I'm lost here. It's just why we would want to go down this path.
If I might just jump in, I actually, the comment from Dash was that it was valuable. So I'm not sure where, I don't quite see the same conclusion that it wasn't valuable. Dash said it definitely was valuable.
Well, that, that's one, and it seemed pretty weak when we hear from the other developers and from Arch that there is no value.
Well, Arch was responding, excuse me, but Arch was responding to the question of whether additional requirements should be placed.
Additional requirements.
Right.
Aren't justified by the economic incentive or the, the economic value of an expedited process. I mean, it's the same conclusion. There is no economic value here for anybody. So it seems to me that the only thing that we're really putting on the table here is eliminating a neighborhood's ability to be able to have input. And I don't see the rationale for that. Or I mean, do I have that wrong? Is there economic value here? Has anybody said that there is? If they're walking away from saying it's not worth it for us to provide additional affordable housing because economically it doesn't pay. Okay, so there is no economic value to an expedited process. What is the value of the economy, of the expedited process?
I, I think I didn't do a good enough job explaining this. The question that was being posed to Arch and then to the developers was, first of all, if you were given an expedited process, would it still be valuable if in exchange for that, you had to provide a lower level of affordability or more affordable units than you were initially intending to do? Remember that was a, that was a conversation. Should we make them do something else to get the expedited process? And what Arch said was, no, you should not do that. You should not require them to provide instead of low-income, very low-income units or provide 10 units instead of eight units or whatever because the short-term benefit, again, of the expedited process is not outweighed by the long-term cost of having to provide these additional units or a lower level of affordability. So there was a short-term benefit. It just did not outweigh the cost of piling on yet another requirement to achieve the incentive.
So I guess I'm kind of in the same place as, as Mike and I understand about the benefit. At the same time, what I thought we were trying to do is increase the number of the low and extra-low cost. And it, it doesn't seem like the developers are willing to do more of that because that there's not a long-term benefit to them, even though there's an initial benefit of the expedited process. So I can see that there's a benefit, but is it achieving what our goal is with regard to the low and the low-cost housing? I don't, I don't see that happening. That I may be misunderstanding.
The project itself would be for lower, very low income affordable housing. So the, the goal is being achieved and they're saving some increment of time as that project is being processed. So the, the benefit of low and very low income affordable housing units is being realized. And it would be happening with a small, I'm not saying this is a huge benefit, but a small benefit of additional time savings. And, and again, they were two, the questions were two different questions. One is, is there a benefit in having it go faster? Yes, there's a benefit. The second question is, if they're doing a low-income project, should they have to do something even more significant to get the faster process? And the answer to that was, well, no. Because then we're having to, then the benefit cost is not there.
Don't mean to be difficult, but it just seems like we're saying the same thing over and over again. The developers are telling us that the expedited process has no real significant value. Arch said, and I'm quoting right here, "There would be little real savings in project costs with the expedited process." They're telling us that, don't ask, give us the expedited process, but don't ask us to give you anything more to receive that benefit because there's no value to the benefit to us. That would justify the additional cost to us. So I've, I keep coming back to the same question. And so why are we offering an expedited process? Yeah, I could see how any developer would say, yeah, sure, if you can give me an expedited process and I get done a little quicker. Yeah, that sounds good to me, particularly if I don't have to pay anything extra for it. But I'm still looking for the community benefit here and I don't see it. What I do see is eliminating the neighborhood and citizens' ability to have input to what could be a significant change in their neighborhood. And I don't see a counterbalancing benefit to the community that would offset that.
Well, this is definitely a commission conversation. I, I think I've tried to explain where the strategy came from and what the goal of the strategy was. If the commission doesn't want to pursue an expedited review process, I mean, the commission is making the recommendation here.
Lori, I did have maybe a question there. So the two, the two folks you referenced were nonprofit housing developers, correct?
Correct.
You weren't able to reach the for-profit. Do we have any indication of, you know, if the answers from a for-profit developer or to their calculus would be any different than what you heard from the nonprofit housing developers?
I have no reason to believe that.
You think?
I think it probably would be the same.
Okay, so we got sort of two different answers from the nonprofit folks, if I understand. One being, seeing more value than the other, correct?
Correct.
So where would you, I mean, with, I'm sorry, you weren't able to get ahold of the folks. Where would you put, you know, for-profit developers' calculus in terms of the responses you did get? Is there any way to?
Well, the only, this is purely speculation. I have no way of knowing this. But I would think that a private developer isn't probably not. There may be other funding sources. There may be other combinations of funding. There may be other reasons to move ahead with the project that aren't dependent on the Imagine Housing perspective, which really said that we're, you know, our timeline is dictated by when Commerce is awarding housing trust fund dollars or whatever. It's possible that a private developer would be in that same exact position. It's also possible that they wouldn't, since their project might not be 100% affordable, which maybe Imagines would be. And so if they were not dependent on that timeline, then I would assume it would be more like the Dash perspective, but I, there's no way for me to know that. But I, there's no way for me to know that.
Lori, maybe you could just kind of point out that the public review process doesn't mean for all, there would be no public review process. There is a SEPA threshold, and I don't remember off the top of my head what the SEPA threshold is for the number of units. Maybe that might have some, some bearing on this.
Okay, well, the, the public review process, as I said, with a type-one permit, there is no notice of applications like a building permit. So there is not a public notice unless there is a SEPA review. And if that's the case, the threshold is 20 dwelling units. And then you'll recall that we restricted this opportunity to the multifamily and the commercial and the public semi-public zones.
Hey Lori, can I make two comments really quick? Actually, one question. Based on what Arch said in that last part of that paragraph in the memo, it talked about the long-term cost of providing more affordable housing at the lower levels of affordability, it wouldn't be worth it. If we were to open this up to just overall affordable housing, I know that was something, one of the first positions we took was just to open it to all types of affordable housing. And then we narrowed that scope, but now it sounds like they're saying that if we narrow that scope, it won't make an impact. Do you feel that if we open that scope back up to affordable housing in general at adding another level, that that might make an impact or might make it more appealing to some of these developers or Arch?
I am just feeling like I'm doing the worst job of explaining this. Arch was not saying that doing the affordable housing at any level was the problem. The specific question they were asked was if you give an affordable housing developer for a low or a very low-income affordable housing project, the opportunity to reduce their review process, but only in exchange for doing a lower level of affordability or more affordable units than they would have to do otherwise. Is that worth it? And so I, they didn't even comment on the process itself. I think they were fine with low income and very low income. They were saying, give them the process, but then don't put another burden on them by making them go above and beyond. Just leave it alone. Just give them the process and then don't, don't make them do more than they would otherwise be planning to do.
And what you mean by doing more is that kind of talk that we were having about trying to determine how many specific units for the project? Is that correct?
Well, no, what you had talked about was that, so the idea was you're going to give these developments the opportunity to have a faster process. And then a commissioner said, well, if we're going to give them a faster process, shouldn't we be asking for even more than we were asking for to begin with? So then you, then the question was, talk to a developer and see, you know, which of these two alternatives do they like? Did they want to provide like three extra units so they can get the process on top of whatever they were planning to do? Or did they want to provide very low-income housing as opposed to low-income housing instead of what they were proposing to do? And if they, if they don't want to do those things, then they don't get the process.
So, oh, so just to clarify for myself and for everyone here, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. You're saying that if, if we have this expedited review process, just as it is, without any other kind of restrictions, it would be more appealing to developers and to Arch. But it's the fact of requiring them to set a certain number of, of units at a certain level or requiring additional units, that would be unappealing. But overall, the idea of an expedited review process is appealing for these projects.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I
Thank you, Nathan. You should be doing the staff work here.
Well, I mean, if you're hiring, no. But I think, well, my position going forward is now clarifying that. It makes sense to keep looking at the idea of an expedited review process and not throwing that out the window, but just taking away what we had been discussing about requiring a certain number of units additional or requiring them to be of a certain level. So just making it a little more simpler of, of requirements to achieve this expedited review process. And then also on top of that, my second point, sorry about that, in response to Commissioner Van Doolen and Great House about changing it to a type-one process, my opinion, just viewing this, I understand about the worry of taking away the public input. But I mean, looking at this and hearing the different kind of restrictions we have on that, I think there were, there were a list of kinds of things that excluded that from a certain project, affordable housing project, from achieving that type-one status, if it had any kind of variation or any kind of regulation difference. Also, we talked about how if it has more than 20 units within the project, then it has a SEPA review and would have, would not qualify for the type-one as well. And as we talked about, they're restricted to those zones that we've already determined are acceptable. So I guess in my opinion, with all those restrictions, it would be kind of refined enough to where the project itself, if it fit those restrictions to meet a type-one, I don't believe it would make as big of an impact because it's in those locations and because it's a smaller-scale project and because it's, it's not requesting any kind of major variation. So I, that's, I believe that that on its own is fine if we have those in place. It's just when we start to, if we didn't have those restrictions on projects that requested variations and we allowed them to, to qualify for a type-one, that's when I could see issues coming up and that's when I could see more vocalness, I guess, in the public about not, not having it be a type-two permanent review process.
So the question I'm kind of wondering is, okay, so we have this, if we have an expedited process, how many more units of affordable housing at any level would get built in the absence of such a process? I mean, it kind of builds on Mike's, you know, original question about, you know, what, what effect are we having without, you know, are we getting some benefit with, with this? It's maybe a step, you know, a step higher up perhaps, but I mean.
I guess there's no way to tell how many more units we would get. What we can say is if someone came into the city and they were proposing an affordable housing project for, that included units for low and very low-income folks in the city's commercial or multifamily or PSP zones, they would have a faster process. And that's what we can say. I don't know. To Mike's point, maybe that's not a, and a huge incentive, but it's something. It's just one more little stick in the bundle for how to encourage or make it easier to develop affordable housing.
And maybe I was stepping back in, maybe you could reiterate, the city council's interest in having us look at this was again, was to specifically look at the, the kind of review process, right? And see, I'm trying to go back to sort of first principles. What, what are we charged with trying to, to do with this?
Right, the, the, the charge was to look at a review process for affordable housing. They were particularly interested in like public properties and church properties. And, and so that was part of the charge, but basically it said, just look at the review process to see if there's a way to make it faster and easier for this kind of a project.
But not necessarily at any, at any cost or any trade-off, right?
Right. They didn't speak to that.
And we also kind of bumped into the whole idea that currently in the situation we're in, in the city, helping this expedited process might actually, actually require the use of a consultant to actually get the work done. And so that puts another layer on it too, because the city doesn't have a way to pay for that consultant. They would pile that cost onto a quicker process. So to me, it doesn't make sense if these nonprofits or a combination of a public interest and a nonprofit and private interests came together to actually create a project like this, shortening the time, if they have to pay more money, they might not really go for that. The only person I can think of who would, or entity who might be interested in that would be somebody who's developing the property and they're adding some form of affordable housing to be able to expedite. But even that, I mean, it, it just feels like this framework isn't I mean, if the goal is to create more affordable housing, I'm not sure this is the framework to do it.
Commissioner Baker, if I might respond on that point, just with my own viewing of the option of a project development going and getting a consultant. To me, that sounded like if they wanted to choose to hire out a consultant, they had the option to. That's if the city couldn't, couldn't do that themselves. So looking at this review process that we have been thinking over and kind of gnawing on right now, a developer for a project could go to the city and, you know, I wouldn't see too many issues of them being held up in line. But if they really wanted to push the project through, they could elect to go for a consultant instead. If they didn't have the funds or didn't have the money, they could still wait in line. Is that correct, Lori?
Correct.
So it's, it's just opening another door for them. They don't have to take that door. We're not saying we're requiring you to pay this extra money. It's just if it would be more beneficial for them, they have that option to. So it's, it's adding another pathway for them, but we're not forcing them down that pathway, if that makes sense.
So it's just kind of like a little sidebar on the framework that we're trying to create.
Yes, if they wanted to do that, they could elect to do that, but they don't have to spend the money to. It's just if they feel it's in their best interest to. I believe that's what it is.
And the converse, and the converse of that is somebody that didn't have affordable, either the very low or low affordable housing in their project, this expedited process would not be open to them at all.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding of this so far.
Okay. Okay, well, that helps. It was good to talk about that. Thank you, Nathan.
Of course. I mean, that's what a commission's for, so.
I'll jump back in here. What I hear throughout the conversation is a lot of, well, we just don't know. Which is, that's valid. I mean, that's true. And so in moving this forward, we're taking a leap of faith. And we've done that before and sometimes you have to do that. Certainly, it's something that the city council would have to make a decision on. But if we back away from, or actually, if we keep with the three things that I see that are important here, taking away, and those are the specific zones, if we stick in the specific zone we've already identified. And we stick with the requirement that, that the project has to include low or, and/or very low income. And I, I don't know, we set a criteria on that. I think that leap of faith becomes a little more, a little more tenable, a little more palatable. I think ultimately, the city council is going to have to make the decision about whether or not it thinks there's significant value or sufficient value here to deal with the fact that they're taking away something from public input. And they get elected to do that sort of thing. So I think on a technical basis, if we keep the zones, we keep the low and very low criteria in here. I think we have to set some kind of, what is that threshold? I think we've got a good place to start. And if we wanted to go through with something, I could support that, maybe with a side note to the city council of making sure that they understand that we had significant concerns about what this might do to the public input process. And Lori, thank you. I know this is a difficult conversation. And you actually got a pretty good job of, I think, trying to, a very good job of communicating something here. I just think there isn't a lot of firm foundation in this. Thank you.
Any other commissioners, you know, care to weigh in at this point on, on this, on this thread? So what's our next step here then?
Well, if I am not seeing commission action to say, you know, amend or otherwise at this point. So I assume that the next step would be to take this language, and then we still have this piece about the development agreement. But take this language to a public hearing. And, and then you would make your final recommendation after that. Unless you have other comments about it tonight that you want some adjustments.
And would, would that be excluding attachment four, that other little sub-note that, about requiring a certain number of additional units to be eligible for the expedited process?
I would recommend against using attachment four.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, at the public hearing, we would be making the public aware of how this proposal would impact their rights and ability to provide input.
Correct. Yeah.
And is there a way we can collect responses on that so that we can bring that back and have that to weigh on in a, in a future meeting?
In terms of, well, we, we would advertise the hearing as we usually do. We'll be setting up a webpage that'll talk about what this is. And then we do a public legal notice and then we put it on the city's webpage. And then, you know, inviting people to the public hearing and providing the background. And then we advise them that they can submit their comments in writing or they can come to the meeting. Is that, are you thinking of something different?
I was wondering if there was a way to solicit public impact or input on the specific question of, are you okay with moving this to a, a type-one, which would expedite, potentially expedite low-income housing development, but the trade-off would be in the expedition. This is expedited because we're going to take away the ability to have public input. You don't have the privilege to just take away. But so if people are very clear about that, we could get, elicit some direct response from the community on that point.
I have a question about that. So how would you be able to do that without having attachment four? Is the reason you wouldn't want to include that information is because we haven't come up with the criteria where the question marks are in that second section?
I, I think, Carol, that after talking with Arch and with the two developers, their conclusion was that requiring that extra burden on the project, as Nathan so aptly described, would be too burdensome. And so staff is recommending that attachment four language not be inserted back into the amendments.
Commissioner Baker, if it helps clarify it, so attachment one and attachment four are identical. There are two different options that we have. So attachment one is what we have currently and attachment four, I believe, is what we were talking about at the end of last meeting, about putting in the extra additional units that would be required. But from what we've heard from Arch, that extra addition wouldn't make it more appealing or any easier. So I believe, well, at least my opinion, was that, you know, we should stick with attachment one because they're, they're identical. We're just trying to pick one or the other. But one, from what we've heard, is probably the better option.
And section B really does keep it open to a more generalized potential developer, whether they're a nonprofit, a combination, or a private developer. potential developer, whether they're a nonprofit, a combination, or a private developer. It doesn't give them that additional, yeah, I can see that, that additional criteria. So I'm going to play the devil's advocate. Would it be better if we had some kind of language that said, does the public want to have expedited permitting, but allow for a type two process where there still is a hearing appeal or a hearing examiner appeal? Or does that just defeat the whole purpose of this framework? The goal is to expedite, so you wouldn't want another couple steps in there. I see that.
Right.
That, that's the circular conversation that we're having.
Right. So I think what we, ultimately, we would like as a staff to get direction from is which version are we taking forward for a public hearing? And I think what we are recommending is the version that you started with for the reasons that we've been going around and discussing. And you would then, at the public hearing, you then ask for public comment. And as Lori has said, she describes what those changes are. But you don't typically, for a public hearing, ask questions about what do you think about a specific part of it? You're asking the public to give their feedback. And if the public feels strongly or has comments or concerns on any part of the regulations, that's the purpose of a public hearing. But you typically don't poll the public on a, asking a question about a specific piece prior to a public hearing.
Yeah. And Debbie, I'm fine with that. I wasn't really visualizing it would be polling. But if we're, we're very clear in some kind of a side-by-side or other analysis, so that people understand what the change is, and then they have an opportunity to digest that in comment then or later, I think we're fine.
I think, I think you've seen that Lori is able to do and explain the code in very clear language. And so I'm, I'm very confident that the public will understand what is being proposed and what the differences are.
So also, just to clarify, under, under, you know, attachment one proposal, you know, based on the language compared to attachment four, we'll, we'll get some unknown number of very low-income or low-income affordable housing units without, again, without specifying it. So so again, we don't know, right? How many, I mean, it could be, it could be one, it could be 10. I mean, we just, right, we're basically leaving it to a developer to bring a project based on, you know, having some very low income or low income. So are we sort of just hoping for the best? I mean, I mean, I'm just trying to wonder, again, to, to the question of, are we really going to get much more affordable housing? I understand the arguments for not having a specific criteria. That, that's, that's been gone through, but maybe I'm just coming back to Mike's point. Are we, I mean, how much, what are we really getting out of this? If it's, if it's so open-ended.
I, I don't think, I think the, the goal of this is not to produce more housing. The goal of this is to make the process simpler for those developers who are planning to do an affordable housing project. The benefit to the community is that, that this one stick or tool or whatever we're calling it, expedited review, might help get those lower or low-income projects faster through the door into construction.
Okay, I appreciate that framework. That, that helps. Thanks, Debbie. So do we need a vote or do we need a, just to go to the public hearing, Lori, based on attachment one or what?
Unless there's someone who wants to insert the language in attachment four instead of attachment one, I would just assume that we were moving forward to the public hearing with attachment one. And, and then there were some other corollary code amendments, but that package would move forward. So if I see a nodding of heads, also, that's the case.
Okay.
All right.
Question. I'm happy with us going forward with this on attachment one. But when we do the discussion with regard to the, the public not being able to delay the process or having a comment, is there a way to make it clear that what they're doing is just giving up their right to a public comment before the city, but they aren't giving up any right to pursue litigation? If that is their desire?
Right.
Because it's, it's not like they're not going to have any recourse. It's just that it's going to be a totally different and usually more expensive process.
Right.
I just, you know, that might help wake them up as to what the impact is. So I don't want to overemphasize it. I'm just trying to think that that's a, perhaps a useful way to put it into your memo of explanation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And they'll have other opportunities to comment besides a public hearing, of course, right? They can write comments or otherwise send them in.
If, if they know about the project, they can send them in. There would not be a notice unless, again, it was a CIPA, a project involving.
I'm in for our public, I'm in for our potential.
Oh, our, your public.
Yeah, I want to make sure there's.
Oh, yeah, totally.
Show up on Zoom or whatever. They can.
Yeah. They can submit written comments, they can email, they can contact us however
Okay.
they wish to.
And that'll be made clear in, in all the communications, right, too?
Right, just as with any public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And you have direction on that, Lori?
All right, great. So the other piece of the material tonight was this question about the state requirement for allowing consideration, the city must allow consideration of a density increase on properties, affordable housing projects on properties owned or controlled by religious organizations. Those projects have to be 100% affordable. It's not that they can be three units. They have to be 100% affordable. And they have to have a covenant over them for 50 years to retain the affordable housing. And so the question that you had me ask the city attorney was whether, you know, the state law talks about moderate income affordable housing. And your interest has been in low and very low income affordable housing. So I asked the city attorney whether we could make that clear. And if you choose to go ahead with the development agreement code amendments, we've tried to clarify that. So if you're doing the kind of affordable housing that the state at that upper threshold, the most you can get is the maximum density that's allowed by the zone currently. If you are requesting a higher density than that, then it can only be considered for low or very low income affordable housing. So that's what those development agreement amendments, I believe it's attachment six, are trying to explain. So if you look at page two of attachment six, in some of the, it says, here are the kinds of projects that are, you're able to do through a development agreement. So this is existing language, all the properties in these different zones. But then there's a new subsection that says properties in any zone that are owned or controlled by a religious organization, as explained in the RCW, requesting consideration of an increased density bonus for affordable housing. And then it talks about how you have to meet the standards in the RCW, which are the 100% affordable and for 50, controlled for 50 years. And then in the paragraph before that, it talks about the benefit to be provided. And a new subsection is added that talks about considering this kind of request. And that's where it specifies that at some point, if you want to do a density increase, you can only do it if you're proposing low or very low income affordable housing.
Of any number or, or just?
It has to be. That's, that actually, that's a very good point, Mark, because I don't specify there. So you could read it as any number. So if the commission wanted it to be only 100% low income or very low income, we should make that clear. It's not clear currently. Whereas if you want to say, if you're including some of these kinds of units, you could consider it. That's a very good point.
So it seems to me that that would be something that you could come up with that as the planning commission's recommendations. But that would be one of those sections that perhaps when the city council reviews it, they would use some other kind of formula. I mean, you could say 100% has to meet the low or very low threshold to gain, you know, to gain any number of additional density. I wonder if that would put a damper on the project, though. If it's, you know, we already have 100%. You have to have it be affordable, but it's at that higher threshold of, you know, more variables in the, what is considered low income. But if you make it that really low to very low, how would we handle that? I mean, would you want it to still be 100%? That's what we have an opportunity to recommend.
Right. That's the question, which version you would like.
Well, to Carol's, you know, point there, I guess, a question I would have is, I mean, how many of these projects are likely to try to seek, you know, an increased density bonus? We're already, would be getting, you know, again, as she said, moderate income housing units, so. I mean, what, what would be the pros and cons of making it 100% low or very low income for the, the density bonus?
Well, if you make it 100%, it's just a higher bar. If you want to say any project that includes 50% or 25% can, can consider a density higher than the maximum density. That, that just is more, provides more flexibility. But I don't know if that's what, again, 100% have to be affordable per the state's definition.
Right, already.
But I, I guess, when I was thinking of it, I was thinking of 100% very low or, or low-income affordable housing. But you raised an interesting point, which is that you would set that threshold differently. And there's really no, I don't think there's any rhyme or reason to where you would set that threshold.
I mean, you, you could do it if you made it, you know, you could have, there, there is a maximum density that any piece of property would be able to accommodate, correct? Based on the other building requirements that are the land use ordinances. But you could attach it to, I don't know, that could be thought of as discriminatory. But, you know, you think about just reading through some of the King County numbers and their hope to have so many low and very low, you know, affordable housing. They, they aren't anywhere close to reaching those goals. But you can't change the building codes to accommodate more density just because you want more low-income housing, or can you?
Well, it's not really a building code issue necessarily. It's a zoning code issue where we specify zoning densities. And currently, the way the code is structured is you have a regular density and then you have a maximum density if you're providing public benefit, usually affordable housing. So as written, the development agreement would allow you to propose a density increase up to that maximum if you were doing 80%. But if you wanted to go above that maximum, you'd have to do low or very low income affordable housing. And we did the transit-oriented development district. The threshold was set at 10%. There was some work done that concluded that 10% was probably the break-even point, but that was a private development where it wasn't 100% affordable. And then in the downtown commercial zone, the threshold was 25%. And, and they accomplished that with the Spencer 68 project. Though whether you would want to allow a project that was, had fewer low and very low income projects to go through this process and achieve a higher density is kind of the fundamental question.
What occurs to me is we're talking about a development agreement, which is inherently a negotiation between a developer and the city. So and the beauty of a development agreement is you have that flexibility to be able to have those conversations. So part of me, thinking back to our original discussion, when we created the development agreement, it was purposefully for situations in which you really could predict what was going on. And it was likely to be some special circumstances. And we wanted to leave that to, to the staff to be able to work through without putting too much in terms of restrictions on them or trying to anticipate in advance what probably can't be predicted in advance. So I think if we did something along the lines of insert in here the word significant, a project shall provide a significant lower income, very low income affordable units. I think that would be a low bar, but at least it would, it would have some direction to it. And if people wanted to put a number on that, you know, it could be no less than 10% or something like that. So you have a number, a place to start from. I don't have any science from that, certainly no more than what you've already said, Lori. It's probably somewhere between 10 and 20. But I think leaving this and the ability for the staff to be able to negotiate this with a developer coming in, we can't really anticipate what special circumstances are. I think there's value to that.
Yeah, I like, I like that, I like that suggestion and the fact it's a shall. So we at least have some opportunity to get the, you know, the lower, very low income affordable housing that's otherwise, you know, harder to, harder to get. I guess the question is, yeah, would it be a disincentive to the overall prospects of such a development, though? I mean,
You know, that's, in my mind, Mark, that, that's the real question here. And I don't know that we can anticipate that. We can't anticipate what market conditions might be in the future or, or, you know, what the particular property limitations might be or, or potential would be. So I think if we said something somewhat prescriptive, like we're expecting to see a proposal that includes a significant number, and leaving that to the city council or the development office to negotiate and work at the best deal they can, probably the best you can do with this.
I agree with that approach as well.
Carol, Carol, you're muted.
I forgot to turn it on. So should we, I'd like to make a motion that we add the word significant in the place where it says the project shall provide significant low or very low income affordable housing units. And that it does open up that discussion for negotiation. It, it also allows the city council to come up with a formula if they feel like they want to do that. But I tend to agree that just putting the expectation in there that it isn't nothing, you know, it's something, it's significant. I like that word because it, it points in the direction of the intention of what the city council's goal is. I like that word because it it points in the direction of the intention of what the city council's goal is. And it also allows the developer to make it work because they're the ones who have to do the financing for it. I could also see how it would allow partnerships between, you know, the county and nonprofits and, you know, owners of property to come up with creative solutions.
Okay, we have a a motion. Do we have a second? Motion second, we have any discussion on the motion?
If I may, I just want to talk out, I guess, my thinking on this. I like what's going on here about significant, and I'm more than happy to get behind that. But I was also thinking about what I think Lori was talking about earlier, the potential of making it 100% low or very low income affordable housing. And I know that that seems a little extreme, but as I started to think about it, it might be very useful for us as well. Because we, as a commission, we determined that we wanted to, well, to promote low and very low income housing. And I know religious organizations, if they're focused on just that, it helps to to focus just on that and not quite expand it as much beyond the scope of what we're aiming for here. But also, we decided as a commission to, I guess, restrict the incentives that we've talked about earlier. We want to focus a lot of this affordable housing development and a lot of these zones that we've discussed and we've we've approved so far. But the thing with religious religiously controlled properties, those may be outside of those zones. And I think if we limit it to just low or very low income, not only would that provide a little bit more of of structure around the number of projects we might see, but also it's it's sending a message that, hey, if we allow this project, it's going to be worth it and achieve the goals that we're aiming for here. And I know we've seen that it can be hard to get some of these public and private developers to bite on some of these projects that might be 100% or or require a certain number of extra low or very low income units. But if if we say that for a religious organization, they might be more willing to do that and therefore help us go towards our goal while also, I guess, having still a little bit of handle on on the the spots where affordable housing might pop up within the city, if that makes sense.
Okay. We have, I think, a motion and a second on on the original motion about a significant affordable housing units. So are you proposing another motion?
I guess it was just kind of discussion to get out my thinking as I as I look at this. And I don't know if there'd be enough support to support that kind of motion. I don't know if the commission feels the same way or sees the reasoning in that. And so I don't quite want to pass up on the significant one because I feel that's a great first step. But I I don't know if if we maybe pass this first and then one or two of the other commissioners can see some of the reasoning within, I guess, the ideas I had there, then we can go from there. But I don't want to pass up or make a counter motion to the significant one because I think this is very valuable in itself.
Okay. Okay, any any further discussion either to the original motion or to Nathan's point? Okay, so from a parliamentary perspective, I believe, and Lori and Debbie can clarify, we need to vote on the original motion and second, correct? Okay. So Maura, can you can you do a roll call of the of the and reiterate the the motion, just so we all know what we're what we're voting on, please?
I would do my best to reiterate the motion. The motion was to add the word significant with regards to affordable housing units. I'm not sure I caught specifically what it would change.
Can I make a friendly amendment? Maybe clarify this for us and for Maura. I would say in that number three, it says the project shall provide, I would add the the language shall provide a significant proportion of low and very low income affordable housing. Is that acceptable to folks?
Mike, do you think it's more effective to talk about proportion or number?
I think proportion. I think proportion, my thinking there is that, I think, sends a clear message to the developers when they're putting together their proposal of what is expected. But at the same time, provides enough flexibility for the city to negotiate what that is as you go along, based upon what the special circumstances might be in that situation. I if we we could, if I suspect what you're thinking, Mike, is we could put a specific number in there or something like that. I I think that may limit the flexibility of the city based on the size of the project. So I think proportion allows for that flexibility in negotiation.
I think you're right. Okay, Maura, do you have the language to your to your liking?
I do not have the materials directly in front of me. I am recording with a video and prepared to take a motion. I'm not sure that I am I capturing the specific wording or the motion?
Laurie, do I do you have it? We have it. Yeah. So, Maura, you're, and maybe it's just me, but your your sound is your audio, thank you, Laurie. Your audio is really hard to hear, Maura. I don't know what's going on with that.
So.
No.
So Commissioner Vanderland made a friendly amendment to change the language to talk about a significant proportion of, and then that would be inserted in the phrase. And Commissioner Baker, who made the motion, are you're accepting of the friendly amendment? So.
Yes, and I think it might help Moira to know that it's in attachment six and it's under the general provisions under letter C. And number three is the paragraph that we're trying to work on. So it's the very last sentence in that section. To achieve a greater density bonus, the project shall, what were the words we were looking for?
Shall in
shall provide significant proportion of low or very low income affordable housing units. That does, that's very nice. I like that.
Okay.
If I appreciate you working with me to restate that, I was having that time following along. Can you hear me better now on my end?
No. Your your audio is really, really hard to listen to more at this point. So maybe just in the for moving things along, I'm happy to call the roll call here if it's if it's easier.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, go for it, Debbie.
I'm putting my city clerk hat on here for a second. Commissioner Vanderland.
Agreed. Aye, yes.
Commissioner Greathouse.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutzis.
Aye.
Commissioner Orangehill.
Aye.
Commissioner Mulcair.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
That wasn't a permanent promotion, by the way.
So Commissioner Lutzis, did you want to proceed any any further with your your thought? I wanted to give you the opportunity.
I can reiterate my thinking, but I I don't have a general read on how some of the other commissioners are feeling. And it was just an idea to put out there, maybe play with and develop if anybody else wanted to add on to it. But what I was proposing, or not proposing, I guess, but thinking in my reasoning was in that same line, instead of providing a significant portion, providing 100% of units being low income or very low income affordable housing units. And my reasoning for that was sort of what I had said earlier, just going forward. As the planning commission has stated, our focus is to try and increase the number of low and very low units. So if we leave it at just a proportion of a significant proportion of that still leaves some wiggle room for other types of units. And my thinking was that, you know, we it might be harder to have this kind of requirement of public and private developers in some other areas within our city with it confined within some of the zones that we had discussed. But if we make this a requirement for religious organizations, they might be more inclined to actually follow through on this and provide some of the stock that we've been trying to achieve for the city. Also, with this more specific line, I guess, it would also help to let the city have a little more handle on on the the what what's going on outside of the zones that we've specifically targeted. We want some of these affordable housing projects to be developed in. Knowing and understanding that some of these religious properties are within residential zones. If we require or refine the need or the ability to to make these these projects on their properties to be 100%. I wouldn't say it reduces the number or the potential pool of those seeking to create affordable housing projects, but it might focus our efforts a little bit more and and may help those organizations to provide some of those units that we were, I believe, all in agreement that we need within the city. It's just some thoughts out there. You know, and if anybody else has some other ideas they want to add on or if, you know, depending on on what the commission thinks. But it was just my discussion for the last motion and kind of what was going through my head as I looked at that that different different phrasing of the line. Again, I'm perfectly happy with what we've discussed already about the significant proportion. But this this further specification would potentially help us achieve our goals and still help us stick to some of the guidelines that we had for shaping our our thinking on the expedited process.
Okay. You are welcome, I, as far as I know, to make a motion to that effect or if other commissioners want to weigh in, that's certainly part of our process here, so. Anybody else care to care to weigh in on that?
I think it's very admirable of you to want to open it up to a full percentage that if you get higher density, you do have to make it 100% towards low and very low. But I also think that, given that religious organizations generally have charity at the heart of their motivation, leaving it up to each individual organization and not putting a requirement on them, I think is a way to honor their process, too. And I think especially in our the climate that we live in with, nobody really knows what's going to happen. It's better to have language in these kinds of ordinances that give some flexibility. So that would be, but I I do really admire your idealism because we do want to make a provision. And I think that's the whole reason we've waited through this framework and gone back and forth. But I also can see how valuable it would be in a development agreement to leave the negotiation up to the parties involved.
Okay, any more, any more thoughts on on that particular particular point?
Don't want to flog a dead horse here, but I will just follow up. I think Nathan's got a good point here. It went through my mind, too, and I I really was concerned about the way the state law ties our flexibility and our be able to set our own zoning and and conform to our own strategic planning. Unfortunately, that's a fact. And so how do we work within those constraints? We can't do what we would probably want to do, which is to treat the religious organization development the same way we did any other development. But state law precludes us from doing that. So I think blending that fact with, as I think Carol said quite well, keeping in mind who it is we're dealing with here and that the city has discretion in doing this. I I think that's probably the highest threshold we can we can achieve in terms of how do we craft something here that's going to be workable in the future. But I understand exactly where you're coming from, Nathan. I think I do. I appreciate it.
I appreciate the sentiment as well. But I'm also concerned that setting 100% hard and fast is too rigid because it may well be that the religious organization will want to have a couple of rooms or apartments for higher income visitors or guests or something. And that might not be possible if if it's 100%. Anyway, so although I like the the idea, I think it's too rigid to be 100%.
Again, this was just a topic for discussion, so I'm glad we're discussing it. It was just an idea to put out there, but.
Yeah, well. Yeah. Thank you for contributing ideas. That's what we're here for. So thank you. Okay, well, seen see no further action on on that particular item. Lori, what's what's next?
So the only other thing I did want to just, I don't think this will be an issue, but I did want to call your attention to the fact that there's one more amendment in the development agreement chapter. And that is the one that says for a project that's requesting this density increase, they don't have to go through the threshold decision. Usually, if somebody wants to do a development agreement, they have to go to the council and the council has to decide whether they'll consider consider it or not. In this circumstance, because we're sort of being directed by state law to consider it, I eliminated that threshold decision for this type of project. So I just wanted to call that to your attention. That was the other change in the chapter.
Kenny, anybody have any thoughts on that or questions for Lori?
I think as some of the commissioners have expressed, you know, the the state kind of has our hands tied. So I think what's written there perfectly represents and sums up kind of the new guidelines that we we have to work with and accept. So yeah, I don't know what we can do to change it.
Okay, I guess we want to whatever's next, Lori, if anything.
So that was all I needed for the affordable housing review process. So I will try to be as clear and explicit as I can be in the webpage for the project describing the changes that are being considered. And we'll have the amendments and hold the public hearing that second Tuesday in November.
Second Tuesday, November, what's?
I think it's the 17th, November 17.
I think that's the third Tuesday in November. But if that makes any difference in our.
The third is the first Tuesday, so the 10th is the second. I'm sorry, it is the first and third. Did I say the second? I meant the third.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your second meeting in November.
Got you.
The third Tuesday.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to that. I think there were a couple of other items on the agenda that from from the staff memo, so.
Right. So the second item was the Parks Recreation Open Space Element. That was a long time ago. Anyway, there are not other comprehensive plan amendments this year. But we are ready. Anyway, there are not other comprehensive plan amendments this year, but we are ready to take forward the final amendments to the city council. And the question was, you recall, this is sort of the repackaging of the PROS plan. So staff did not think necessarily that the whole Planning Commission joint meeting had to be held. Staff is happy to present the recommendation. If you wish, or if you wish to designate the chair or another commissioner to speak on your behalf, the meeting will be November 16th for council's consideration of the ordinance.
I mean, we've already presented on the, you know, the PROS plan, right? So I don't know if there'd be any value add, and it was significantly similar, right? So is there any value add for us to weigh in on that?
Your value is always added, but we are happy to present it.
Okay, we're very modest here, but, yeah, I just don't know that it's necessary, unless anybody really thinks that we should be out there in front of the city council for this, so.
We can vote you to do it, Mark.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mark, we really, we'd really like you to represent.
Right.
No, I think, I think, given that the staff is highly capable, I would just make a motion that we accept the staff's presentation, since it's not different than, significantly different than what we worked on so long ago, and it probably will streamline the Zoom meeting a little bit if they're the ones who do it.
Is that an official motion, Commissioner Baker?
Sure, I'll make that an official motion.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion on that motion? Okay, do we need a roll call vote for this one?
Is my audio better? You're on mute.
Oh.
Go for it, Maura.
Good, I'm sorry about that. I am happy to do the roll call vote for this. I captured the motion as accepting staff to do the presentation of the PROS element to city council. Is that correct?
That's good.
Commissioner Vanderland.
Aye.
Commissioner Orangeall.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutzis.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mulcair.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
I believe there's one more item here on the staff.
Yes, that's Planning Commission terms, and at the end of this year, there are three terms that expire. Commissioner Lutzis, Commissioner Baker, and Commissioner Mulcair. And so we asked the council what their preference would be for these potential three vacancies at the end of this year, whether they would like to reappoint commissioners, if they were interested in serving another term, or if they wanted to open up sort of an open interview application process. And council direction was they would like, because it's been a few years now, to open up to an open application process. So for the three commissioners whose terms do expire, then what that means is if you are interested in serving another term, you would have to be interviewed by council. And again, council was certainly not discouraging you from doing that, but they wanted to then interview you along with other potential applicants. So what will happen now is we are putting together the application questions, and there will be a press release, there will be information on the city's website and on social media, and then it'll probably be a month-long process in terms of an open application process. So I just wanted to let you know that's what's happening this time around. Any questions on that?
Do we have to take any affirmative step, or would they consider us interested in applying?
If you are interested in continuing for another term, then I think you would have to kind of submit your, there's a very short application process, very simple question. It's probably the same actually set of questions that you had to originally use, so it should be easy for you to fill out. So, yes, so if you are interested in serving another term, then yes, you will have to submit those questions for council consideration.
And when, can you remind me when those go online again? When those will be released?
We probably within the next few days, and what I'll do is I will certainly then send an email to the three commissioners so that you know that, and there's no surprise there. So once it is live on the website, I'll send you an email and let you know where it is and how to apply.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Debbie. I think there are some stipulations about if you've served so many terms consecutively, you have to step away for a season, but maybe when you send that email out, you could pull up those Planning Commission guidelines and send that, too.
That one's not ringing a bell, but I can't say that I've memorized them all, so I will certainly send out the link to the Planning Commission, the municipal code where that is.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, I think we lost our fearless leader.
I do, did just see one phone number join right around the same time. If it's all right, I can promote that person and see if it happens to be Chair Orangeall who called back in. Is that, does that all right with everyone if we see if this is him?
Yeah, sure.
If I am able to do that with a phone number. Good evening, caller at 2063513717.
You're on mute.
Well, I think the, maybe we can ask the vice chair to take over here. There was only one other item on the agenda, which was we were planning to cancel the November 3rd meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Yes.
I think it's an important day, and we thought that people might want to be listening in on some voter returns, so that's one of the reasons why we canceled it. And plus, it gives us a little bit more time to prepare for the public hearing.
Okay, it sounds like that's agreeable to everyone. So is our next adjournment of the meeting?
Do we need to make a motion to cancel the next meeting? An official motion?
I don't think we need an official motion unless there's anybody, if anybody feels that we should have a meeting that night. I'm not seeing anybody jumping up and down, so I'm going to take that, that you are okay with the meeting being canceled on the 3rd, and Maura will send out the information to let everybody know that that meeting is canceled.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other business to discuss, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at 8:40.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Bye. Bye.